We'll call with May 1st, 2012, meeting of the Jackson City Council to order and ask Councilman Ernest Brooks if he would lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
Good morning. After a moment of silent meditation, I would ask that you join me in the recitation of the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who is our God, our God, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We give this life to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Ms. Neda, I think you can show that all council members present and item four's approval of minutes of the April 3rd, 2012 city council meeting. Council has received a copy of those minutes and if there are no corrections or changes, we'll go ahead and approve those as submitted. To the audience, item five is an invitation to public comment. If there's any item under new business that you would like to address the council, please let me know at that time and we'll be sure and call you up. We have one proclamation this morning and that's on Jump Start Jackson, so I'll come down and take care of that. Just remind the council, Jump Start Jackson is a program that started here about 2006, time flies when you have a good time, 2006, and the program is certainly well-known nationally. That program starts Saturday morning. I'll remind the council, that's at 10 o'clock at the Civic Center. And there will be, how long is the walk? Three kilometers and that is in miles? Don't y'all worry about it, don't y'all worry about it, it's 10 o'clock. And we have a proclamation for that and whereas childhood and youth inactivity, obesity and poor diet have become major preventable health issues throughout the United States. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, over thirty percent of children and adolescents ages six to nineteen are considered overweight. And whereas poor diet and lack of physical activity leads to approximately 400,000 deaths annually in the United States. And whereas the state of Tennessee ranks as one of the highest states in the incidence of childhood obesity. And whereas the city of Jackson, county of Madison, and Jackson-Madison County School System have partnered to improve physical fitness, diet, health and wellness in our community through the Jump Start Jackson Initiative. Now therefore, we, Jerry, Yes, Mayor of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2012, as Jump Start Jackson Community Wellness Month. And we appreciate what all of you do. Annette's been very active in this and I'll let her come up and I'll present this proclamation to her. Thank you, Annette.
I just want to say thank you to Mayor Guess for supporting us for the past six years. It's hard to believe, we have had a great time with this. And it started as a joint effort between the city of Jackson and Jackson-Madison County Schools, but it has grown since then. I can't thank Sam's enough as being one of our supporters for this event. And this is a year-long event. We don't just walk once a year. So you guys, I hope all of you come out and join us, but we're trying to make Jackson a healthier place to live. And I, and once again, I thank Mayor Guess for his efforts that he's put forth to make Jackson a healthier environment. And I'm excited about what's happening downtown. Next year's walk is going to be even bigger and greater with the Wellness Center will be completed next year. So if you can't join us this year, be sure, because next year's going to really be a big event. Thank you so much.
Counsel, if you would, and if there's no objection, I'd like to move item four under first readings up to number one. We're going to strike number one at the request of the Tri-County Family and Medicine and Urgent Care Center. They had some people that could not be present today, so they asked us to move that to the, to the June agenda. So if you'll strike item one. And also, under new business, if you'll strike item one, that, that issue will be taken up in our budget. That's a $20,000 allocation from the city. And will not be necessary for us to do anything with that until we approve the budget and be available for next fiscal year. Also, item three and item four, if you all would strike those, we're going to rebid those, those two items and see if we can get a better price or see how much more we're going to have to pay after the rebate. Be interesting to see. So we'll take, again, item four and move it up to item one. And as consideration and ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Lane Avenue running between Hayes Avenue and Milton Street and submitted by Lane College. Stan?
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning, Stan.
This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting and as you're aware and just for
Clarity, the, the staff and the public safety departments did recommend denial of the closure, but the Planning Commission has recommended approval of it to you. And so you have the materials pertinent to that request and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good morning, Stan.
Good morning.
I know that there was a comprehensive report that was submitted, but could you just briefly describe why the Planning Committee, well, your office denied the request?
There were several reasons for us recommending denial. Again, this, the review that we do for the closure is not a sole review by the planning staff. We asked for input from engineering department, from public safety, fire and police. And the, just to give you a short synopsis, basically the, the reasons for public safety's denial was they felt that any closure that allowed them or required them to make an alternate route could delay their response. And in response to that, Lane had proposed a gate that could be, you know, opened in, in the case of an emergency. And, and while that was better, there were still some concerns that, again, that was something that would require them to stop and activate. And while it might be a short delay, it still might keep them from responding in a timely manner. From engineering and planning, the issues for us were more in the way of transportation. And they were recognizing Lane as a principal, you know, collector, serving quite a bit of traffic on a daily basis. It connects several neighborhoods in an east-west pattern. And, and as you are well aware, in this area, there's, you know, there's a limited amount of, of collectors that move traffic east to west. And, and we felt that that would cause traffic to have to seek alternate routes into these neighborhoods that weren't designed to carry this traffic. Also, there was, there's been quite a bit of resources that have been spent on Lane to upgrade it, to, to make it better for the public. And to now take it out of the public's hands and now put it in private hands, we felt like that that was, you know, that really wasn't in the best interest of the mildering public. And, and again, through all the reviews, we recognize and understand Lane's request. But we also understand the, the huge public benefit that, that Lane does serve and felt like that outweighed some of the issues that were discussed from Lane's side.
Okay. Relative to if, if the gate were approved and it was set up there, the traffic that would be rerouted, would that require additional work on those streets?
It's very possible because the, the routes would then be on minor residential streets, principally Orchard that would connect to Middleton. And Orchard is, is, is narrow, especially if you get cars parked on the street, which you do a lot of the time. And, and it would cause some, some narrowness restriction and, and cause the traffic to, you know, to be slowed down and, and make it, you know, more difficult to, to get back and forth. And, and again, while Lane did address some of those things with the gate and, and talked about, you know, maybe leaving it open during the day and, and then closing it during events or at certain times at night. That was one of the issues that came out in the public, in the, in the Planning Commission meeting. For us, that, that presented some, some additional safety issues because right now, if the students are crossing Lane, they understand that there's going to be motorists possibly moving in the area. And so they, they are more watchful. But if you start closing it and opening it at various times, then we felt like it might produce a sense of, of safety in the mind of the student that it's closed when it may be open and, and it could cause them to get less careful about crossing. And so those are just some of the issues that came up is that, you know, we, you know, there's been a lot of talk back and forth and a lot of trying to, to come to some, some middle ground. But again, the, the factors that on the side of keeping it open for us outweighed some of the, you know, the benefits that Lane might receive from the
I guess my question is specifically though, would, would it require additional resources from the city to prepare those side streets to be able to handle that traffic?
Well, again, as you, as you well know, resources are, are in the hands of council to, to approve budgetarily. And, and while something may be required, you still have to budget those resources. And those resources have to compete against other road projects and the limited amount of resources that we currently have, especially in the area of capital. So, so I think what you would end up, in my opinion, creating is a need for it. But not having the resources to perform it. And that's, to me, that creates a problem in itself.
That was my question, thank you, Stan.
Any other questions of stand by council? If not, we're honored to have with us this morning on behalf of petitioners, Dr. Wesley McClure, President of Lane College, and also Attorney Nathan Pride. And if you two would come up and, and address the council.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good morning.
Morning.
On behalf of Lane College, of course, we'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to make this presentation as a concern. The gating system that we proposed, you may recall that initially we had proposed a barrier there that would have closed Lane Avenue off at both Hayes Avenue and Middleton Street. And after consultation with the planning department and others, we felt that complete closure of the street was not being the best interest of the, the public because there were some fire hydrants and things of that nature that needed to be accessed by the first responders. And then I believe that the mayor asked everyone to try to get together and come up with a middle ground that would be best for everyone. And Lane, in his best effort, weighed those options. And we thought perhaps a gating system that we now make propose to the council would be in the best interest of all concern. And when that was presented to the Planning Commission, they felt likewise, by overwhelming vote, that that also would be in the best interest of, of the public. Now, the gating system that the college proposes is a state-of-the-art gating system. It's not your run-of-the-mill gating system at all. It's, meets all city requirements, all state requirements at this point. It's what they call a click-it system that will allow first responders to simply touch a button and the gates open very, very quickly. There are two backups, I think a battery backup, manual backup and so forth. So it meets all of those requirements. There would be no more delay than there would be for any subdivision here in, in the city. And there are subdivisions all over the city and all over the county to have those gating systems, most of which are not to that level. So we think that with the gating system proposed, that that would be, of course, something that would not be any delay to the first responders. And we have, I believe, the, the architects here this morning who, who have made some modifications requested by the Planning Commission, I think, to the panel box and to some of the traffic directions there. So they're here, if you wish to hear from them, indicating that, again, this system is state-of-the-art. Secondary to Lane Colleges wanted to put the gate there was our neighbors. We understand that with any change, there's going to be some apprehension. We know that our neighbors are a little bit apprehensive about what we call a gating system. So in order to alleviate that, we thought that gradual closure of that gating system would be best. Now, for the, for the next two, three years, all the public would know, all our neighbor would see is there's a gate there. They'll still be able to come up Lane Avenue, down Lane Avenue, to, to a great extent, without any change in their daily lives. And it's that one of the reasons why we feel that you all should approve our application. I wanted to bring with me this morning a picture that is in the office that Dr. McClure's, in his council office, that has, it's about this long, it has a picture of Bishop Isaac Lane in 1923, sitting right out at the, at the, at the edge of Lane Avenue. It was a dirt road at that time, potholes everywhere. And he had the entire student body of Lane College right there with him, every professor and every student. There were four buildings that started from the railroad track and went up to about the middle of Lane Avenue. That was all they had at that time, four buildings. Now, some ninety years later, Lane College is not that small. We require a unified campus. And the reason being, so what started out as four buildings on Lane Avenue, one, two, three, four, is now you may see some, almost twenty buildings. A lot of these buildings have been built within the last ten years. Lane College has not been dormant. We spent a lot of capital over the last few years building new dormitories, new cafeteria, new science building, new music building, all of them investment to this community. And unfortunately, what started out as being a totally east campus in nineteen, in 1884, when the college was started, and now we have buildings everywhere. And we have students in dormitories here and here and here. We have students in dormitories here, most of which during the course of the day have to cross that street, Lane Avenue. And that's the safety issue that we seek to address. Now, now we have a street that runs right down the center of the campus. This is our campus. We seek to do only what any college would do, which is think long-term. We're asking the council to think long-term, not just now, not just a year from now, but long-term. Lane College is going to need unification of its campus, is going to need closure of the campus at some point. And so we're trying to do that, begin that process now, so that the community can get used to the gate, can get used to the, the fact of having it there. And also, we can make modifications necessary over the course of the next few years as needed to make sure the gating system is in fact of benefit to all of our community. Student safety, I talked about having students that cross the, the Lane Avenue corridor on a daily basis. Our cafeteria is here. And the students have to go to that cafeteria. It's, I think, we think it's the largest cafeteria in the city, holds over nine hundred students at one time. And they're going back and forth at least three times a day to that, crossing that street to that, to that cafeteria. Those are the things and those are the students that we have in mind to try and provide as much safety as we can. Over the last few months, Lane has not only done that, but has taken a look at its entire system. We've taken a look at the gating system, we've upgraded that. We've taken a look at our security system, we've upgraded that. And we feel that in light of those factors and the fact that we thinking, we are thinking long-term about the campus and its growth, that we'd ask the council to approve our application. We believe that once our neighbors are familiar with that system, and we think most of them have the misunderstanding that we intend to close the street right now and produce a barrier there that they are not used to and have to go around and make adjustments to. But again, that's not our, our request at this point in time. And we have, whenever you all would like to hear them, an application by Mr. Joshua Crenshaw. We also have Ms. Mace Payne, who's a resident there, been there for a long, long time. And we have a letter from Mr. Earl Shaw, who's the president of Stevenson and Shaw Funeral Home. And we understand that Mr. Sean Bletso, I don't know if Mr. Bletso is here or not, also, that will speak in favor of the application.
Any questions of council for Mr. Pride or President McClure? Okay, if not, then this is an ordinance on first reading, which does require a public hearing. And I'll go ahead and open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone here who would like to be heard on this matter, either in support of or in opposition to. Yes, sir, if you would come on up and give us your name and, and, Pride, y'all, y'all can, if you'd like, maybe take a seat at this point. And we may have to, thank you all.
I would like to bring these papers up. We had some petitions up, then I'd like to pass them out to.
Sure, you can go ahead. Let me, let me take Dr. McClure for me.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Buchanan and members of the council. There's only, in all of these notes, these notes I have, only one remaining point that I continue to emphasize. And that has, certainly I'm an administrator, but I'm also an educator. And I speak at this time because schooling, schooling is extremely important. And at this point in our history, the whole notion of educating our community is, is, is really being seriously challenged. And what I want to say to you is, we're not talking about in elementary school. And that's important for schooling. In fact, let me say that I am the product of North Jackson School, Lincoln School, Mary High School, both locations, and Lane College. I sat beside, in a trigonometry class, Charles Buchanan, an Avel scholar in every sense of the word. And, and I can say to each of you that as you grow up through middle school, high school, college, graduate school, the atmosphere around you is extremely important. The student learns, but the student also has to analyze, to synthesize and to use higher thought in addressing higher problems and higher concerns, higher, higher questions. I ultimately received my doctorate in mathematics from the University of Virginia. And I can tell you that at this moment, especially for our colleges and universities, students deserve to and need to have atmosphere where they can intensely study and be intensely taught. And I hope that we as a community understand that some persons understand this anyway, that when you send your child, your relative to college, that is a powerful decision. And, and parents at Lane College are watching what we do. And that street, Lane Avenue, that I saw from the time I was born, Lane Avenue, is a place where everyone and anything goes through it every day. Persons stop. The primary reason why most people come to that section of Lane Avenue is to have some kind of interaction with our students. That includes young men who have no association with Lane College, driving their cars to a certain place, stopping and coming a distance to see our young ladies and others. They call them out of their names. They try to make passes at them. They bring drugs. It otherwise interrupts the teaching, learning, growing process. I'm not going to go on, Mayor, but I hope that when it's all said and done, that schooling is worth a little bit of inconvenience. And the more one can get, the more school. It makes a difference not only for the family and the immediate community, but for the Jackson, Madison County, West Tennessee rural communities. I'll stop there. But schooling, I, let me, I don't know what I would have done if my grandmother had not sent me home.
Okay, thank you. Y'all, y'all can remain seated. I think we'll have enough seating here for you all to stay, stay there. Yes, sir, if you would, give your name for the record.
My name is Gerald Skinner. And I stay on the dead end of Hardy. Lane College is growing and I'm, I'm not taking anything away from the teachers and the staff at Lane College. But we got to realize it's a bigger picture. We've heard what this man said and I'm behind him totally on, a hundred percent on what he's saying. We've got to understand what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with a street problem. There hadn't been a accident on that street in the past five years, so that's not the concern. We're dealing with a gang problem. You guys know we're having a gang problem. Most of the people in this room know we've got a gang problem in the city of Jackson, not just at Lane College. For that reason alone, with what has happened on that college, police would be able to have access to it. I can understand putting up a gate, they talk about safety. Any delay, I've even been in a meeting where I've heard racist issues brought up against the people that are making the decisions on how long it's going to take to get from point A to point B. If that's the case, why would you want to add to that? Let's just say they're right. Why would you want to add to that by blocking it any kind of way possible? That's the same thing, it's just a different agenda. We got to deal with the gang problem and we got to get people where the gangs are. I see some city council members that I know for a fact know what's going on with this gang situation. Do we address that and look at it on a large scale? And I'm not just talking about local gangs, I'm talking about gangs being brought in from out of town. Lane College is growing and you think about the future, they're going to continue to grow. I've been living in my house, 526 Greenwood, the dead end right there by Hardy Street. I've seen it growing. I've heard the block parties at two or three o'clock in the morning. I've heard the gunshots going off. Police and emergency vehicles need to be able to get to these locations. If you've got a mother, a cousin, anybody, one of your loved ones living in that area, you don't want any kind of delay that's going to hinder emergency vehicles getting there. And you can call these guys a lot and we can pay for it if you approve this later on, we go, oop, they were right. But education is important. Security, I feel, should have been upgraded a long time ago, before the incident that happened. It's happened, we got to move on, we got to try to find a solution to move on from here. But I'm saying you got to look at the big picture. And it's important that we do need, with gangs, if the gangs are there, police need to be able to get there. Emergency vehicles need to be able to get there. And any kind of delay is delay.
Okay, thank you, sir. There was a petition delivered to council and it's being passed, passed down for their
Mayor, I assume he wants to make this a part of the record?
Yes. So back down, we'll give it to Neda, make it a part of the record for this meeting. Okay, we'll continue the, continue the public hearing. And again, I ask if there's anyone present who would like to be heard on this matter in support of or in opposition to. Yes, sir, back here. Come on up and then identify yourself, please.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Joshua Crenshaw. I'm the newly-elected SGA President of Lane College Student Government Association. And the, the issue about the gate is that we all know it's not going to stop the crime and things of that nature that comes through, but it's all about our safety. I've heard comments from young ladies saying that they have, have had passes come onto them from men or, or, you know, people of, of Jackson, Tennessee. They're not, it's just all about the peace of mind. We're walking down these streets every day, trying to get to our classes or to the cafeteria, which, or either side of Lane Avenue, we have to make, we have to make that pass through the street. And we all know that the, the police officers or EMS, fire trucks, they have to make, they have to make that route through Lane Avenue. But regardless of that fact, we still going to be, we're still going to be a, a delay to that response team because to that response team because we're going to be walking down that street, and we're not going to know, like, how to, you know, which way to go and things of that nature. But it's all about, it's all about the peace of mind. We, we go down these streets every day, and, uh, you know, gang members might come by, but we have, we have, uh, student, we have guards there who are, you know, blocking all that off. But, uh, I mean, we, the students were all for this gate. We protested, we marched to the, we marched to a city hall trying to get this done because it's, it's all, it's been deemed a problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we had someone right here, a lady sitting right here on the aisle. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mace Payne, and I live at the corner of Hayes Avenue and Orchard Street. And I was under the impression that we were down here today to talk about closing, maybe a block or two of Lane Avenue for the safety of those children. Gangs, they're everywhere. Gangs are on wheels, not only around that neighborhood, but all over the city of Jackson and the world. We really want to do what we can to help the children there. And if anybody here would come out there on any day and just stand for about ten or fifteen minutes and see those children trying to cross the street. I live on the corner. I'm afraid to back out sometimes because they're spleen, they're speeding up and down like it's the forty-five highway bypass. I know that the policemen cannot be there every day to watch us, but I really think that you should do something to help somebody. We don't want someone to get killed before you decide to do something. There's no sign out there to slow them down. You have no bumpers out there to slow them down. When they come off of Lane Avenue, they pass my house. I live, maybe, the parking lot separates me from the C Mac building. And every day when I pass out, try to get out. I get out, I can't turn the wheel because here comes some cars speeding, and I have to sit there and wait. And then I have to drive up on, uh, the parking lot, Stevenson Shaw parking lot, and wait till I can get a chance to get into my driveway. Now, I really think I'm serious, and I think everybody in here should take this serious and not wait until somebody come down there and run over somebody. Now, I'd like to tell you about an incident that did happen when Dr. Chambers was here. It was a man going down Hayes Avenue so fast. It was two men in, in the front and a little girl in the back. They ran across Lane Avenue, through the hedges, and hit a tree in Lane College's campus, and the man was killed. And we all ran up there to see. You can never tell when something bad is going to happen there. And this is serious, and it's not about gangs. Gangs everywhere. I don't care where you are. And no point in talking about Lane College and gangs, because it shouldn't be that way. And I am far doing something. If you're not going to close it, you need to do something. It's very unsafe there.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Brenda Brown. I live on Buddy Street, as does my mother, Mrs. Hannah Brown, and my niece, Marcella Luster Brown, Marcel Brown Luster. This is from Marcella because she has to work, so I would like to read this, please. Dr. Wesley McClure and the City of Jackson, dear meeting attendees, I am a longtime resident of this city, and I am writing to express my concern about pending decision to close off part of Lane Avenue. I understand that the decision is being considered due to wanting to close off community access to the college. However, I do not believe that this would benefit our community, especially when it comes down to emergency access for the residents that are located on the surrounding streets. I worked in the medical field and know that time is of an essence when it comes to saving someone's life. If this portion of Lane Avenue was closed off, the emergency team would have to wait for your staff to open the gates or take a longer route to get to the residence immediately. I understand you wanted to make the campus safer for the students that are attending Lane College. I too want the students to be safe at Lane, but what about the safety of all involved in this community? You can gate the college, which would limit outside access without closing off Lane Avenue. My grandmother, Hannah Brown, has also been a part of this community for years. She is in her elder years, and her health is slowly deteriorating. She too, years ago, was a student at Lane. Her home in past years was board and shelter for several students attending Lane. She now has to listen to the sound of drums beating a lot of nights until about ten PM, Monday through Thursday during the fall season, coming from the students on your campus. We as a community have to deal with the foul language of your college students as they go up and down Buddy Street. They throw trash in our yards. I have seen it with my own eyes, and of course, when I see them throw it down, I politely ask them to pick it up. Some of the students respond with an apology as they pick up their trash, and some act very foolish. I truly understand you wanted to make the college safe for the students at Lane. I have two daughters myself away in college. The college they attend is located in a residential area as well, with outside traffic going through its campus. They do have gates around the resident halls, and no one can get into the dorms or their buildings without swiping their ID badges. They also have a campus police station located right on the campus with cop and security guards who make sure the campus stays secure and safe. Students have to obey the rules or they get sent home. My daughters appreciate and have great respect for the staff on their campus. Maybe some of these tools would be useful to your college instead of closing off the street. I hope this letter would influence your decision to do the right thing for all involved in this community. Sincerely, Marcella Brown Luster. Dr. McClure alluded to the fact that the non-students are hitting on the young ladies, but his students are just as guilty of those same offenses. I also have heard and seen the young ladies, and I use that term loosely, unfortunately, because they don't act as young ladies. And the young men are all, we have to listen to this, because my mother lives right at Sixty and Buddy Street. She has lived there for almost sixty-two years. They moved there when I was a baby. I moved back to Jackson in two thousand nine, when the dorm right there on Buddy Street had just been completed and the students were there. I gave them a chance to see, okay, I don't like what I see, Dr. McClure. Your students are rude, they are ill-mannered, and possibly illiterate because every other word is a profanity. And that is not acceptable for any college student. I have watched Lane College for years, and I know the quality of students that went to Lane College during those years. That quality is no longer there. I see this with my own eyes. I hear it every day. As far as safety, why not install security cameras in the areas to where they are needed instead of closing off the street? And not to make light of this, but every child, from the time they learn to walk, has been told, look both ways before you cross the street. And with them being the age that they are, and also, they will challenge you to hit them. They will challenge you when you are driving in your car to hit them as you are trying to turn. They will literally stop and hold you up from your destination just to see what you'll do. Somebody's going to, are going to run them over, and not because they are speeding, because all people don't speed when they drive, and a lot of the traffic up and down Lane Avenue are your students driving, not non-students. It's quite easy to blame non-students for so many incidents when it's actually your students perpetrating and involved in it. So I'm against the gate because it's not going to ensure safety at all, really. It's just going to create other problems, and it's a lot of egos going on here, and it's not in, in including the community. It's not very many people left on Buddy Street now. It used to be a booming street. I lived there. I was raised on Buddy Street. And at the age of eighteen, I started work at the Illinois Bayle in Chicago, and I stayed there for thirty-two years without a college education, and still made the kind of money that some of you don't make now. And that was ten years. I retired in two thousand and one with thirty-two years of service. All kids are not meant to go to college, not because of academics, because you have some very, very intelligent people, very smart people, who don't have to have a college degree to be a success. But if they are not encouraged, if they are not taught that, you know what, you can be anything, let them make that decision. Encourage them. Whenever you keep telling the child, you're never going to be anything, they start to believe it. They start to believe it, and they act accordingly. I am positive you have some excellent students that are artists, that are writers, that can, that work with their hands. But if nobody encourages them, and nobody takes the time to say, you know what, you can be better than what you are, instead of hiding the things that they do and taking up for the wrong that they have done, you're sending a message that you can, you can do anything, and I'll protect you, but you're letting them loose on a neighborhood that says, you know what, I'm not going to take it. You are responsible for those students and even the visitors that visit your campus, whether you want to be or not. So instead of putting a gate up and having somebody man it twenty-four hours, put security up, because human eyes miss things, but that camera won't.
Okay, thank you. And if you, if you'd be kind enough, could you give your letter to Anita down on the end, where we'll have it part of the record here? To the girl on the end, Ms. Anita? Thank you so much. Anyone else that will continue the public hearing? And let's see, yeah, back here. If you would identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Pauline Long, and I'm a resident on Berry Street. I'm not trying to knock Lane College at all, because at one time, I worked there for five and a half years as security. But what we did, we knew our students. And the problem is not the traffic that's coming down Lane. The problem is on the inside of your, your students. I had some that lived across the street from me, from Lane College. And I loved to sit on my porch, but I did not sit there because of the language and the things they were saying and they were doing. The traffic was over there on Saturdays and then Sundays as if they were having a party. It was like forty and fifty cars lined it all up and down the street. Now, that's not on Lane. I know you want to protect your students, but when we were there as security, as I said, we knew our students, and when somebody came in off of the street, we could stop them right there. So I think your problem is, your security need to know your people, you need to know your students, and they are the ones that's causing the problems. All the time that people's coming off the street is not doing that. I admit that men's are going to say something to girls, and girls are going to say something to boys, but they are improperly dressed on that campus and walking up and down the street. It is ridiculous how those young ladies are dressed. So if you're a young lady dressed like this, what else do you expect? So I don't think the problem is closing it all. I think you should learn your students and know them and not put it all on people on the outside.
Okay, thank you. We have, uh, yeah, yeah, right over here.
My name is Monica Kimball, and I just had a point of information. I understand there was a petition presented, and I was curious, what was the language on that petition, and could we get a count of the signatures supporting it?
Well, we just received a petition this morning. I'm not for sure. We, we've been trying to be attentive to the, to the public hearing comments, and I'm not sure anyone took a, took a count.
I think the person who presented it might have a count, at least an estimate.
We can, yeah, if you would.
Estimated maybe a hundred and thirty signatures, a hundred and thirty signatures. But I took it straight from the location, and I'm counting, looking at the pages of it, how many signatures.
Okay, thank you.
And was it supporting the closure or against it?
Against.
Against.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, yes, back here in the back. Come down. Morning.
Good morning. I'm Pamela Newble, and I live on Orchard Street. We're right in the midst of this whole situation. Just wanted to bring a, a few things to light about this. Residents and others in the community have really been concerned about this issue, not just now, in the recent months, when there have been some unfortunate acts that have happened in the community, but this has been an ongoing, for years and years, we've had a lot of concern about the safety and security of the residents, the college campus, the community as a whole that comes through this area, because we're talking about streets that are main arteries to our elementary school, to our churches, to businesses. But our thing that we want to bring out today is, closing this section of the street is not the answer. When things happen on another side of town, are we going to run over there and ask for those streets to be closed too? Already, Orchard Street, which runs parallel to Lane Avenue, we get a lot of traffic. We're neighbors to the college. We like being neighbors, but we have some issues. Every year at homecoming time, the proposed section that you're talking about today, it's already being blocked off on homecoming day. Hayes, LaCott, Middleton, Orchard Street, we catch all of that traffic in the afternoon. It's just like going down I-40. You can look back, if you can find a report of when the police has been called out, to ask them to try to come over there and monitor this area, because we're just afraid that not only the residents over there, but just the visitors in the city for that weekend are going to get hurt or killed. Now, closing that would end up rerouting traffic. The traffic would come to the nearby streets. I hope some of you all, or most of y'all have driven in the area and looked. Already, Orchard Street is a very narrow street, uh, due to the, the expansion of the college, they've already taken up street parking. There's only a few little spots along there that we have for parking for company, visitors, or whoever. So where are we going to go? We're going to go down on, across the railroad track and park when all this traffic start coming through? Another thing, the street is not designed to take all the bulk of the traffic coming from commercial vehicles. Over recent years, a lot of city dollars have been spent. I remember, as a little child, we didn't even have curbs on that street. And when we finally got curbs on our section of the street, we were happy. We still don't have sidewalks, and we hadn't asked for them. You know, we can deal with the curbs. But a lot of the problems in the area, being over there and living over there, when you live over there twenty-four seven, people coming and working and coming in and out, they have their opinion of it, but when you actually live there, you see what's going on, you hear what's going on. And I've heard today from a few people that live on nearby streets, and it's interesting to know that they're facing the same thing and seeing the same thing that we're seeing over there. It is more of a safety issue for everybody. There is a crime issue. Now, as far as security, security needs to be enhanced. I've noticed a few things, but when you come out or you notice there's some things going on, negative things going on, and security just standing there looking, that's not security. That's not appropriate security. And I'm a firm believer, if you have a body, meaning human body, that's out there vigilantly twenty-four seven, there are some things that may be coming through when happen. But when you have those bodies standing around and things that happen, that's a problem. That is a problem. And I just ask you all to really consider this from every- And I just ask you all to really consider this from everybody's standpoint. And I think maybe as far as the safety of the students, some of those acts are being carried out by the students. I see 'em clowning. We hear 'em clowning. They walk out in front of cars. Sometimes it's intentionally. They even get on top of cars and ride around speeding. And just a few weeks ago, I just, my thoughts were, I sure hope a parent don't be coming down here very soon to pick up a body because of the things that the children do. A lot of this is behavior. It's not learning, it's behavior. You have a lot of good ones too, a lot of good ones. But then you have some that are not good, but we just can't point the finger and says, "People coming into the community." And I just feel like being gated, it's not the answer. I think the traffic can be monitored by appropriate security staff and security cameras and also letting the individuals that attend school there know what's expected of them would make a big, big difference. And please be mindful of the people that live over there and what we have to deal with. The traffic that we have to deal with, the noise, the speeding. There are a lot of reports out just asking patrol to come through. And when they come through and they're visible, it stops only for a few minutes, but we know they cannot be there 24/7 because they're trying to serve the entire city. Not just our section. But if they were there, and I like the idea of someone said a campus had a police unit, that may be a solution there. Because it may be that it's not just the presence of security. Another type of security may be what's needed. And I know that it would make a big, big difference, not only for the college, the faculty, the students, but the community. Now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Newble. Anyone else who would like to address the counsel during this public hearing?
There was a few more, some signatures.
If you would, just give that to Anita. Thank you so much. I think we have someone way back in the back. I thought I saw a hand come up. Yes, now come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Larsa Bledsoe and I live on the corner of Lacon and Orchard. And the security at Lane and all around, you know, it's not that good. And the kids, they're always out doing stuff, you know, throwing paper and keeping the community all just, you know, not that good. And I just don't think we need that gated fence either.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else who would like to be heard during this period of public comment? If not, before I close the public hearing, let me just thank the ones who have taken off from work and taken time out of your schedule to come up and to be a part of this. So if there's no other, I'll declare the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I thought we had one other person, Mr. Sean Bledsoe on behalf of the Bledsoe Funeral Home. I'm not sure if he's still here. And I'd also like to indicate to the counsel the letter from Stevenson and Shawfey whom I'd like to make part of the record that's in favor of the gating system.
Okay. If you would, just give that to Anita, we'll make it a part of the record here.
I understand Mr. Bledsoe had to leave, but he has left a handwritten note indicating his favor of it. And if I may pass this through.
Yeah, if we can just get that to Anita and have that part of the record, Pride would be fine. Okay, I wanna make sure that we've heard everyone that wants to speak. And if we have, then we'll declare the public hearing closed. And is there a motion for approval of the ordinance on first reading?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you ask for the motion, I have some comments.
Okay, we've got a motion. Let's get a second and then can you make your comments after that second?
According to the motion.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second, okay. Recognize Councilman Buchanan.
Mr. Chairman, and to the council members, to Dr. McClure, Attorney Pride, to the Lane College family, to the residents of District Four. Let me present myself to most and introduce myself to some of the students that I have not met. My family owned a business on Lane Avenue for 51 years. I have been a resident of the Lane College community for 33 years. I have been the city council representative for 17 years. The city has spent $4.5 million to widen Lane Avenue from Royal Austin Mary Boulevard to Harley, to four lanes. Over the last three years, the city has spent $1.4 million on Lane Avenue to upgrade Lane, to make it similar to the Lambert Boulevard look. New street resurfacing, new crosswalks, street signs, sidewalks, streetlights. There are 9,600 residents in District Four. And immediately behind Lane Avenue, there are 3,400 residents. There has not been a traffic accident reported on Lane Avenue in the last five years with respect to the safety of the Lane College students. Crime, as I've said before, can happen anywhere at any time. If we're gonna propose closing or even sanctioning streets, then we might as well close up half of Jackson. I've heard from many residents in my district, and they are against closing a section of Lane Avenue near Lane College. It creates an us and them situation, and that is not good for the total community. I am a Lane College graduate. I love Lane College. My family, over the years, has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for Lane College. Closing a section of Lane Avenue near Lane College is not the solution for safety and crime aspect of the area. At this present time, on this agenda, a $1.2 million request is being made for North Royal Austin Mary Boulevard to connect Phase Two from Lexington Avenue to Lane with new street lighting, sidewalk replacement, street resurfacing, and a bike route. The connection of these main arteries are important to East Jackson. The east-west arteries, the main arteries in East Jackson or Lane Avenue, Lexington, Preston, Jackson, and East Chester, we only have five. The closing of a section of Lane Avenue, near Lane College, will have a tremendous impact with respect to the immediate streets around Lane College. Orchard Street, Hardy Street, Middleton Street will have extra loads of traffic. The main arteries in East Jackson need to stay open. Of the 3,800 cars driven down Lane Avenue daily, it is estimated that only about 800 of those cars are going to Lane College. The planning staff recommended the denial of the request to close a section of Lane Avenue near Lane College with respect to emergency vehicles entering East Jackson in a respectable time. I agree wholeheartedly with their recommendation not to close a section of Lane Avenue near Lane College. I urge my colleagues to join me in voting no to close a section of Lane College. And since we are giving so many things for the record, I feel like I'm in court. This is a note from the principal of Lincoln Elementary School stating that she is against the closing of a section of Lane Avenue, Mrs. Shettleworth. We have many, many middle-aged to elderly citizens directly behind Lane College who need access to emergency vehicles. Understand that Lane College is my heart. Understand also that I represent the total District Four. And it's been 10 to 1, residents are telling me, "Do not vote for this, Buchanan." I love the total community and I will continue to do everything that I can for the total community, which includes Lane College. There are some other things that I am not ready to reveal that we would like to see done around the Lane College area until meetings have been held. But I pledge my full support to those things. But at this time, we are entertaining the motion that you have, Mr. Gis. But I ask and urge my colleagues to vote no on closing a section of Lane Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. We do have a motion and a second. Additional comments from counsel?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, sure.
Mr. Pride, and you've heard all, everything that's been said this morning. Relative to the first responders, and we've talked about emergency vehicles being able to access not only the college, but that area, does the college or do you have any independent information that would refute what they are saying relative to the ability to access?
It's our understanding from talking to the people who design the gates and so forth, that those systems are automatic. So when they, that click it system allows them to open the gate before they get to it. There is no delay. The gate will be open when they get to it. And we understand that that's some, less than, I think, 3.4 seconds that gate is open. So we don't think that's, is going to hinder the first responders coming anywhere along that line. And what I also want you to take into consideration for the council is that along this whole corridor, there is nothing but Lane College buildings on the left side and eastern, west side of there. There are no residents there. The residents are along this line, but it would not be in the delay to them because they're gonna have to come to Ms. Payne's house and those houses the same way they would have anyway. So it would not be in the delay. But from this point, Hayes Avenue to Middleton Street, all of those in Lane College is proper. And we're concerned as well. And that's why we removed the request for the barrier, which would have limited access as opposed to the gating system that would allow the complete access. And again, what I want the council to understand is, we're not talking about tomorrow or next year. We're talking about the long-term future of the college. And that's what we are missing here. At some point in time, we need to unify the campus. And we think that this body is the right body to do that now. We're willing to limit that gate's usage in terms of the closure of the street for as long as necessary for our residents, our neighbors, to get used to that gating system. It may be five years, it may be six years. But eventually, the seven houses here on Orchard Street, we hope, will become Lane College property. There are only seven houses there. Ms. Payne, right there on the corner, is in favor of it. So we think long-term for the college, long-term for the ultimate growth of that body. And again, in being a good neighbor, that closure is the right vote today. And we ask the council to allow Lane College to increase its footprint and to make it a unified campus for a lot of reasons. Those students' safety is important, but the overall growth. Lane College has spent over $30 million in terms of new buildings over the last 10 years. Everybody's spending. We appreciate council giving them new lights and sidewalks and so forth. That's just another step in toward making the campus what it is, an important, vigorous, contributing member of this community, and of course, the heart of East Jackson.
So if I understand what you're saying, is that the only delay would be to the campus in the first responders? You're saying that there would not be a delay to the neighborhood?
No.
And that's very important?
No, no.
Okay. Secondly, I had a concern whether or not this was part of an overall strategic plan. I believe in the meeting that we had earlier. I suggested, and I thought that it would be very helpful for this to not be the only thing that the college is doing, but part of an overall plan. And if you could discuss that.
I'll let Dr. McClure address that, and I think the answer is yes.
It is a part of the 10-year plan. We are up for accreditation this year. As a part of the 10-year plan, we are going to gate the entire campus, item number one. We already have ID swipes at every dormitory. By all dormitories, we have the ID swipe. We have safe streets, safe a lot of things. I just, I just don't know what to say when I hear someone try to make it sound like young men and women make mistakes and do wrong only at Lane College. It's done on all campuses. It's a part of college life. And I'm just puzzled by the notion that someone would think that the pranks, the crimes, whatever the case may be, are on Lane College's campus. And finally, with respect to the plan, the plan, Lane College's strategic plan takes into consideration the community, the District Four. That community probably more than other schools do. And one of those, Mr. Councilman, is the fact that I was born on Berry Street.
Yes, sir.
I was, I was, I was not born in a hospital. I was born in the middle room of a three-room shotgun house. And if I don't have the sense and the compassion to know my neighbors and their children and their grandchildren, their other relatives, it is a part of a larger strategic plan.
And relative to that, very quickly, Dr. McClure.
Yes, sir.
Could you discuss what is being done in the area of security? That issue has come up many times this morning as well.
Yes, sir. We will have officers on the campus in the next school year who bear arms. They will be a part of a separate entity. And going down from there will be security guards, but they will serve a more limited purpose. We are acquiring additional technology on the side of cameras, on the side of light and heat-sensitive technology, et cetera. We have as a part of the gate, more technology there. A first responder would only slow down. He wouldn't even stop. So we're not talking about time and for access to the campus by first responders. It would be the same. It would not be diminished one bit. So the things that we're hearing today are rightly offered by my citizen friends. Just seem so strange to me.
What would be your answer to those people, Dr. McClure?
That they, that they do not understand the things that we have done and are doing that in this community, African-Americans especially, have fallen behind and have been behind and could be much further. If we took chances, if we understood that to make progress, there will be times when we're inconvenienced. But Lane College will never, I repeat, never do its neighbors and neighborhood wrong for any reason whatsoever.
And, and lastly, you mentioned that this was a 10-year, possibly strategic plan.
Yes, sir.
Do you expect the campus to increase in those 10 years? Do you expect the enrollment to increase as well?
We do. We, we, we expect to go to between 1,800 and 2,000 students in the next seven years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brooks, and to the council, I, I think one other thing that we had told the planning commission is that gate is going to have a person there, uh, all the time. In addition to all of the other state-of-the-art systems that's there, it's going to be a person there. So when the fire truck comes, they see it, they will be able to assist in making sure that there's no delay.
Mr. Chairman, call for the question.
We have, we have a motion, a second. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion fails with six voting against and two voting in favor and one abstaining.
Going to, uh, item two.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Going to item two, under first readings, uh, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located northwest corner Pleasant Plains Road and Clullen Road from RS Single Family Residential District to RS One Single Family Residential District comprising 3.36 acres, more or less, submitted by McAlexandra Engineering on behalf of NCG Partners.
Mayor, council, this item was presented to you at your last, I mean, was presented to the planning commission at its last meeting, and they have recommended approval of this to you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but you have the materials and the staff's recommendation.
Okay, any questions from council? This is an ordinance on first reading, I'll ask anyone present who'd like to speak in opposition or support of passage of this ordinance. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. Second, in discussion, council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration of ordinance to rezone property located on the south side of Ashport Road behind the Waterstone PRD from RS One PRD Single Family Residential, Planned Residential Development District to RS One Single Family Residential District comprising 9.73 acres, more or less, along with revised preliminary development plans submitted by Jerry Winberry.
Again, this item was presented to the planning commission at their last meeting, and they have recommended approval of this to you, as well as approval of the revised vision to the preliminary development plan.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion-
Second.
And a second. Before we vote, gentlemen, again, this is ordinance on first reading, is anyone present during the public hearing to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance? If not, we'll close the public hearing, we have a motion and a second, council please vote.
And the motion is passed unanimously.
Item five is consideration of ordinance to close an abandoned hole cove running west off Walker Road, just south of Brooksy Drive, submitted by Freeman Webb Company Realtors.
Again, this was presented to the planning commission, they are recommending approval of it to you, you have the materials pertinent to this closure, it is a, a street that now just serves private development, does not serve any public purpose, so that's why we're asking for the closure, the abandonment.
Any questions, council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, before we vote, again, uh, this is a ordinance on first reading, I will have a public hearing, anyone present who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance? If not, we declare the public hearing closed, and we have a motion, a second, council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Stan.
Under item nine, new business, we are, um, deferring item one until we look at the budget in our public hearing in, uh, this month, um, for $20,000 contribution to the recommendations of Youth Gang Prevention Task Force. Uh, item two is consideration of resolution approving the annual action plan of 2012, 2013, Dave.
Okay. Uh, good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
Uh, Anita handed each of you a revised budget, and the explanations are, and I'm not sure if your copy has it, but we had the $75,000 for special youth employment in this budget, proposed budget, you actually approved it last month for amending last year's budget, and we're going forward with that with HUD approval. Uh, and the only other change, uh, in, in this budget that you have before you is we moved $80,000 from Target Rehab into Chodo. The Chodos have various different projects ready to go and not enough dollars, and we have enough dollars in Target Rehab to, uh, continue that program, as well as I had a discussion with HUD, we have to commit these dollars within two years, and this will help us meet that goal with HUD, uh, because they have ready projects. So, uh, this year, on the last page is the, is the grand total of all the programs, housing, uh, making up the most substantial part, $424,912. Our section 108 payments have increased this year to $233. Uh, Boys and Girls Club at $50,000 under the CBDO Economic Development, and public services, which, uh, meet the cap of 15 percent, uh, and as well as, when you add the $90,000 ESG funds in there, it's $174,000, and Admins 153, meeting the percentages that's allowed under each grant, uh, for a grand total of $1,035,099, which is substantially lower than last year. Uh, so we're basically maintaining the existing programs that we have in place.
Okay. Any questions, council, for Dave, on the action plan for 2012, 2013?
So does that, does that mean that we're meeting our maintenance of effort on those grants?
Pardon?
Does that mean that we're meeting our maintenance of effort on those grants?
I'm not exactly sure.
There, there's not a maintenance of effort on those.
There's not on those, okay.
No.
Okay.
Okay, any, any additional questions, Dave?
Question, Mayor.
Yeah.
On, on the, uh, the minor emergency repair, we've got estimated program income of $39,000. Is that from repayment of loans on that, or where's that income come from?
Basically, that, that funds are coming out of a revolving loan fund that has not had any activity in it for three years, a small business loan. And when you remove revolving loan funds out of that account, it automatically becomes program income, and you have to spend those dollars first before the allocation. And there's a need in the minor emergency repair program because of the increased cost of 108 payments, uh, in, in the, you see, our allocation was only 47,000, we've been operating anywhere from repairing, well, we're already as of, uh, through three quarters, reached the goal, have reached our annual goal of 31 houses, and I still have another eight or nine houses that are, are on a waiting list to do. And so we need to keep, continue that program because what we do is, there's a lot of heating and air conditioning systems, especially heating for elderly in the wintertime, and heat has become, uh, just as dangerous as well, uh, and we only put air conditioning systems in, if they already have a full HVA system that's inoperable. We do not add HVA systems, HUD will not allow us to do that. So that's, that's where those 39,000 comes from, and the 9,000 helps match the homeless programs under ESG.
And the other question is, uh, Operation Hope and ESG matching, what are those?
ESG matching is, the ESG grant has about $90,000 we receive from THDA, and they have to match that 50 percent, and some of the agencies just do not have that matching dollars that we're allowed to match at CBVG. That includes the Dream Center, uh, Air Relief Ministries, and, uh, Southwest Human Resources, uh, homeless homes there on Royal Street to operate those. And they're matched, and they receive 50 percent of the other funds come from the ESG grant.
Okay, any other, any other question? Is there a motion to approve the annual action plan for 2012?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Dave. We've deleted, uh, items three and four for rebid, um, that will be on the June agenda. Um, item five is consideration of contract for Royal Street Rehabilitation Project. Any questions on, um, on that contract?
I, I just had a quick question, how, how far is that going to go? Is that what they're talking about, from Lexington to Lane?
That's right.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Move to approve them.
Okay, we have a motion, approval, second, discussion, council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item six is the board appointment for the planning commission, reappointment of Chief Absher.
So moved.
Motion, a second, discussion, council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And on the CRA, Community Redevelopment Agents, reappointment of Vicki Lake and Willie Moore.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion, council please vote.
The vote is, the vote is, the vote is unanimous.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, item seven is consideration of approval of the following general fund write-offs, and you all have a copy of those, and pretty much, hopefully, discussion's been held as far as why we're doing it, and I suppose, um, can we take all of those in one motion?
Yes.
Or you need, okay, all right. Let me ask someone else.
Karen.
Karen or Al, is, is, is any reason why we can't take all of those in one motion?
Not the way it's presented, I think we could.
Okay, all right, good, all right, good deal. Okay, we're talking about the, uh, base taxes, delinquent garbage write-off, delinquent public billing accounts, and personal property tax lien, so you have the numbers there, is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, discussion, council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, item eight is consideration of invoices over 10,000.
So moved.
Motion, a second, if you wait, council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, there be no further business, meeting is adjourned.